Sorry, good evening and welcome to tonight's Yukon City Council Municipal Authority Meeting. It's January 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We're in the council chambers, which is the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight, our invocation will be by Debbie Kaufman from Chisen Trail Church and followed by the flag salute. Would you please stand?
Will everyone please bow your heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for helping us get through 2023, and so we ask for your love and grace in helping us navigate 2024. Watch over our first responders, military personnel, and government officials, and help us all to work for the betterment of our communities. We ask all of this in your heavenly name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice sprawl.
Roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Inmark?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Okay, we don't have any presentations or proclamations. It's time for the visitors' section. Mike Burris, you've asked to speak.
My name is Mike Burris. I live at 300 East Platt Drive. You guys voted on an issue last time that really had affected us for years, and when it got voted on, we all kind of just sat there and looked at each other, not knowing what to do or how to deal with it. And I want you to know, we appreciate it. You've read the letters, so you know what the difficulties were. It was tough, but I appreciate you guys helping us through it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Right, now we'll recess as Yukon City Council reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of December 19th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Inmark?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item 2A, consider approving the termination agreement between the Yukon Municipal Authority, Oklahoma, and Utility Service Company Incorporated for water tank maintenance contracts for services to Mustang Tower, Integris Tower, Vandement Tower, and Cornwell Tower. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we get an understanding of why we want to do the termination on this?
This is the original contract that we did back in 2012. It does not include our newest water tower, which is off Frisco Road, so that is why we are terminating this contract.
Very good, thank you.
And are we using the same service provider in future contract?
Yes, sir.
This is just a restructure?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Inmark?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item 3A, consider approving agreements with Utility Service Company Incorporated for asset management and full-service maintenance for water storage vessels, Cornwell Tower, Vandement Tower, Mustang Tower, Integris Tower, and Frisco Road tank, at a total cost of $1,356,546, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Inmark?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Well, now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of December 19th, 2023; B, payment and material claims in the amount of $637,927.54; C, designating the items on the attached surplus list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Inmark?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards, commission, and city officials. Ms. Kretschmer?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Right, thank you. Item 3, consider a motion to approve the scope and fee proposal for the I-40 ramps, Garth Brooks Boulevard intersection improvements, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Inmark?
Yes.
Consider a motion to approve no left-turn signs to be installed at Holly and Sheedack School northbound, as recommended by the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Inmark?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item 5, consider a motion to approve an agreement to retain Merchant McIntyre and Associates LLC for governmental relations services commencing on January 1st, 2024, and terminating on March 31st, 2024, in the amount of $8,000 to be billed monthly. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question. So, on the term of this, it appears worth three months. How are we going to measure success and if we're going to continue on with this or not?
This is a trial period. We would enter into a longer agreement after the three months.
Okay. So, you have criteria of how we're going to measure impact in some of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Inmark?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 6, consider a motion to approve the bid specifications and advertise for the City of Yukon Fire Station Number 1 Cast Stone Repairs, as recommended by the city architect. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Inmark?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
We're going to pull item number 7. We thought we would be voting on the bargaining agreement, but there were some language and some errors that we were waiting to hear back from the attorneys, but they've been on holiday, so we will have that in the January 16th meeting. Item number 8, consider a motion to censure Councilmember Jeff Wooten for violations of the city charter, Article 2, Section 8, Article 3, Section 22, and Resolution 2021-09, relative to actions interfering with labor negotiations between the city manager and Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 173, representing City of Yukon police officers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'd like to start with, this did not come lightly. It's a very difficult thing. This isn't about liking someone or not liking someone. It's about the fact that we have taken an oath of office. And Donna, do you want to read what those mean, chapter?
Yes, I'd like to clarify the charter and the city council resolution. Yukon City Charter, Article 2, Section 8, which provides, "Except for the purpose of inquiry, the council and its members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the city manager, and neither the council nor any member thereof may give orders on administrative matters to any subordinate of the city manager either publicly or privately." Yukon City Charter, Article 3, Section 22, which provides that the city manager shall be the chief executive officer and head of the administrative branch of the city government, and shall supervise and control directly or indirectly all officers and employees. Resolution Number 2021-19, in which the city council adopted a best practices handbook for Oklahoma municipalities that outlines the city council's role as the legislative arm of the city and the city manager's responsibilities for day-to-day operations of the city, including the direction of all other employees of the city, and the duty of city council members to limit their participation in negotiations with labor unions representing groups of city employees, to formal participation through appropriate channels such as executive sessions of the city council on labor negotiations, and to avoid participation through informal meetings with labor unions on contract negotiations.
Any other discussion? Can a individual come up? We have somebody who would like to speak? Okay, yeah.
I'll be honest with you, I really don't, oh, I'm sorry, Mike Burris, 300 East Platt Drive. I don't really know what's going on. I dealt with the cop thing and asked the city manager and a few other people, you know, what the deal was and why we didn't have a contract with the cops, and they said, you know, I really got some issues there, really can't talk to you about it, and, you know. And I said, okay, I mean, fine. So then I went, and Susan kept saying, you know what, you won't shut up about this, go talk to the cops. So I got in the car and went down to the police station, walked in, said, you guys, what's going on? What's the deal with this? They actually called one of the shift commanders, I guess, up there, and he walked in, and I said, and I started asking him questions. He went, man, you know what, I'm wearing my uniform, I can't talk to you about this, I can't discuss these issues with you. And I said, well, what's going on? And he said, well, I can probably direct you to some people or give your phone number to them. I gave him my phone number, but then I got chewed out by the wife because she said, you gave him your home number, you ain't never had the house number, so. But that was only a month or so, and I didn't hear from him about it. I guess where I'm going with this is it seems like it's kind of difficult to get to you guys and interact with you and talk with you without coming to your house. I mean, I'll run past your house a couple of times a week, maybe three or four times a week, but other folk, I don't, and so it's more difficult. I'm sure that other, you know, other city council people have gotten pestered a lot about, what's the deal with this? What's the deal with that? What's, you know, and I don't even know what all has happened here. But one of the things I discovered in addressing this issue was this, this deal about the forms and government roles and all this stuff from this group that I honestly never heard of before, O-M-A-G, and there's a handbook, and I started reading the handbook, and there's, you know, where I'm going with this, censure is intense stuff-
It is.
-for politicians. And I know you guys ain't-
We did not-
You're almost like politicians. I know you don't act like politicians a whole lot, but you kind of are, and so, but because you're a whole lot like normal people, I'm betting if you said, hey, man, this is really a bad idea, let's not do this in the future, I bet Mr. Wooten would probably go, okay, but you know what, and if he can't defend, I mean, if he goes, look, hey, you know, I got to defend what I was doing, you know? One of the things that I've only gotten through at three pages in this book is transparency is said four or five times. So, if you really want transparency, you got to have somebody that'll go, okay, yeah, I'll tell you what's going on. Now, if they're not telling you the truth, that's entirely different, but, you know, I don't know-
In our charter, it says that city council people are not to interfere with negotiations. In that book that you stated, O-MAG, that's where Resolution 21-19 came from. We hire a city manager who is in charge of negotiations. FOP presidents are not to call city manager, as city council members, and talk to them about negotiations. That is not ethical. We have somebody who is supposed to do that. We can be informed by the city manager, but we hired her to do a job.
And I understand that you're talking about a very tight box that people are put in, but where do you go if you're a citizen and you want to know? And I want to ask you about, a lot of times, it's tough when you're a citizen and the answer is, man, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you about that, or I'm sorry and I can't tell you-
And there are certain things that we can't. Negotiations is one that we get information from the city manager, and we're not allowed to get that out.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that you have to break rules, but what I am saying is, is if transparency is important to you, you got to find a way to talk to people and talk to the citizen and say, hey, here's what the deal is, here's what's going on, here's what, and especially, you know, we want our citizens to be active in all this stuff. We want them to come, you want us to come talk to you, I know you do, you've said so a bunch of times.
Answer your emails and talk to your phone, but negotiations of a union and with the city manager is a different ballgame than, hey, can you help me with my Airbnb?
But, and although I appreciate where you're coming from, and I won't press the issue any further, what I will say is that a lot of times, if you just say, hey, don't do this this way, people go, okay. But if you're committed that by darn, this is what I'm going to do, then that's fine. Generally, the thing that I have found, and it's not like I was, I dealt with things at a level like the fire chief or anything like that, but when I had people under me, if I just said, hey, almost always, if I said, hey, man-
And sometimes that works, and sometimes it doesn't. The behavior continues. And that's when, just to reprimand, because we cannot have our charter violated, nor can we have our best of conduct.
Well, you know what, and now that you, now that you mention it, maybe if, if just by darn, we're committed and we're going to do this, maybe you could table it long enough so that people could not only read the things that you cited and Ms. Yonda read at the meeting here, but maybe we could find out what actually did happen, what actually was said, or what-
But again, that is not, that is not for the citizens. That is something that is talked about in executive board negotiations between the union and the city manager. As citizens, you don't really get an input into that because it's a union.
You realize what you're saying there is-
I mean, you can tell her what you think, but you don't get to sit in the meeting with her.
I understand, but you realize what you're saying is, is that you don't get to know about it, but we're going to do it anyway.
No, she informs us of what's happening.
Who does?
The city manager.
And I'm sure she's an honorable lady, and I'm sure she would give it to you straight, has she? But was he talking to her? Or was he talking to someone else?
Again, I'm not at liberty to say.
So, again, we're at the same spot where you can't tell me what's going on-
What we're saying is that Councilman Jeff Wooten violated our charter, so you can read that, you can read what it says, that you cannot, as a councilperson, interfere with negotiations between a union president and a city manager.
And I, I'm not disputing what's said.
Tonight is not about, if Jeff's a good person, a bad person, can we say, don't do that anymore tonight, is, was there a violation? We did not take this lightly. We did not take it lightly, trust me.
I hope I haven't led you to believe that that's what this is, why I chose to speak on the issue was because there was some, I've never been to his house or never drank a cup of coffee with him. I don't know the guy, other than interacting with him here. But what I, but what I will say is that when you keep telling me what this says, but then you tell me, we haven't actually proven that any of this-
No, we have, or we would not have this on the council agenda.
And see, a citizen doesn't get to know that.
Right.
And, and again-
Tammy, would you like to address that, what we did know?
Do you want me to explain what happened?
Yeah, I'm, because I, and I, and I say that because censure is a big deal, and if you, if the council would prefer that I sit down and shut up, I'll do it.
But this is- Mr. Burris is a member of the public. You can, the chairman can allow members of the public to talk on items that come before you. You don't have to follow his direction. You can, you can say that we've had enough communication to move forward. Members of the public aren't entitled to speak on business items of the city, but you can allow it. So, you can go as far with this as you want, or you can move on.
There is that whole matter of public concern and being able to talk about it, but-
And you've certainly had that.
I certainly have, yes, that's true. So, I mean, you know, but, but again, my deal is, is that if you, if you started at the lowest level and moved up, a lot of times, that corrects whatever you want to get done, rather than punishes somebody for doing it, you know, but-
Sometimes that works, and sometimes it doesn't.
I guess you're saying it didn't. So, okay, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please.
Do you have one in the audience?
Oh, sorry, yes.
My name is Mike Frame. My address is 7951 Prairie Ridge Road. I am not here tonight on behalf of the FOP. I am here tonight on behalf of myself. I'm no, I am no longer the president of the FOP. However, because I was addressed visually a couple of times in your references, I feel like I should probably clarify some things. At no time did I partake in, or anybody on the negotiating team partake in, in the accusations that are being made right now with any councilman. I believe that it's, it's important, as Mr. Burris said, transparency and accountability in government, and that's what we're all about, and I, and I think that's something that we strive for here at Yukon, so I just want to set the record straight, and at no time do I believe that I violated or that any conversation I had with anybody violated what was discussed previously.
Did you call Councilman Zimmerman?
Am I allowed to talk to people in my off-duty time? Yes, ma'am.
Did you call him about negotiations?
I'm not on trial here.
I know, I'm asking, did you call him about negotiations? You're denying it.
No, I'm not. I said, I don't think anything was improper at all.
Calling a councilperson about negotiations is improper.
That's, that's not the only things that were discussed, ma'am. And if we want to talk about improper things, and if we want to talk about things that were done improperly through negotiations, I would love the opportunity to sit with you and discuss those things that the city manager did. So, again, I am not here on behalf of the FOP, so any retaliation or any efforts like that that are to take place in the future, they need to be directed towards me personally, not the rest of the organization. Something that I did is being called into question, so I am here to tell you that I did not do anything that I believe was wrong. So, having said that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Kretschmer, would you refer to a conversation you and I had about the FOP presidents, what he said concerning Mr. Wooten?
Yes, this, was at breakfast that we had. I meet with the mayor.
Sorry. Sorry. I meet with the mayor usually the Thursday before a council meeting to go over the agenda. Any of the council members, as long as there are not three of us, are welcome to attend. I told the mayor about October 9th, that I had met with the FOP president, Mike Frame, and that a meeting was held on September 29th, 2023. FOP did not take my offer. Their offer was 16% for new officers, 6% for sergeants, 5% for lieutenants, 4% for captains, and 3% for majors. I did have the HR director, Cindy Shivers, come in because there was some discrepancy on some of the numbers, so I asked Cindy to come over in relation to some numbers that Edmund had, and we were comparing, so she was there. And she pointed out where, where the discrepancy was, and after that, I asked Mr. Frame if he spoke with the Vice Mayor Wooten about the negotiations, and he said, yes, and said he asked him if he would approve their offer. I told him that I didn't appreciate his actions and that I didn't trust him.
Cindy, would you like to come and verify this conversation?
On the 9th, I did go to Tammy's office to verify the mistake. Well, it wasn't really a mistake, it was just a discrepancy in the metro average pay plan. Tammy and Mr. Frame were, were meeting prior to me getting there, so I don't know what the conversation was prior to that. Once I got there, there was the conversation about Mr. Frame contacting Mr. Wooten, and I'm not exactly sure. I will tell you, I didn't pay 100% attention because they were discussing something that really didn't involve me 100%. So, but I do recall Mr. Frame saying that he did contact Mr. Wooten, and he was talking about that he had contacted him, trying to find out information about Mr. Inmark, because Mr. Inmark had just come on the council at that time, and he was-
Wanting his phone number?
I don't know that for sure, but he was trying to get information so that he could welcome him to the council or whatever, so that's what I know.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
So, so that conversation that she's referencing took place before Cindy, majority of it took place before Cindy arrived in the room, so there's no way that Cindy would have been able to tell what took place during that conversation. And I never admitted to contacting him about anything. She asked me if I talked to him. I said, I talked to him, period. That's it. I didn't say about what, I didn't say about anything. So, it seems as though there's, there's some discrepancy in how the conversation went, and I feel like as a member of a private organization, I can talk to and have conversations with people who have a vested interest in the city. There's nothing wrong with that. We all want the same thing. In no way, shape, or form was I ever directed, or did I ask for any sort of interference from anybody, on the council or off the council. I did nothing wrong. We did nothing wrong. And so that's why I'm here tonight, on behalf of myself, to try to defend myself and my actions, that's it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Sorry, but if I could, again, you're talking about something, somebody said to somebody else, and some guy's going to get in trouble for it. It just don't seem right. If there's some disciplinary process where there's a determination or a meeting or, and somebody, some third party that's totally disinterested sorts out who they believe, then, okay, but that's, you know, I understand, I believe everybody because I think you're honorable people. I don't think nine times out of 10, there's a difference in story because people honestly believe what they were told. We all were in psychology, and we whispered in the ear, and it went around the room, and something came out totally different than what started in the first ear. Now, you know, come on, I just think you're reaching hard. I understand, you do have a right to say, okay, you don't get to talk to people, but I've collared these guys at various different times, and you're right, as soon as there was a third person that walked up, they all shut up and walked away. You know, I mean, they were kind of forced into that position.
They're very good about that.
And, but, I have got them one at a time and said, here's what I'm interested in, here's what my problem is, here's what my concerns are, and they listen respectfully, and you can tell they truly did listen. Come on.
This is about negotiations.
I, you know what, I understand that. I promise, you won't have to, you can continue to say it if you want to, but I got it. You know, I know what it is, but I, but what I'm telling you is, is I'm not talking about negotiations, I'm talking about reasonable and decent and transparent, and the transparency's what's coming up under this document that I've only read half a dozen pages on, but, but, come on, ease up off of it, it's getting, censure's a big deal, that's a bad word for, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please.
Inmark?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Wooten?
No.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Okay, any new business?
No new business tonight, ma'am.
All right, council discussion. Councilwoman Inmark, we'll start with you.
Nothing further.
Okay, Councilman Zimmerman?
I have nothing further.
I have nothing further.
Vice Mayor Wooten?
I got nothing for you.
Councilwoman Donna?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of things. One is the Daddy Daughter Dance is coming up, January 27th. We have three different dances, ages four through eight is at 3, ages four through eight, it says that again. That must be wrong. And there's one at 5, and then ages 9 through 12 at 7.